Public servants like Deborah Hensley, like Jake Gibbs, and like our former mayor Jim Gray. Social justice and civic engagement have been central to my life. I'm currently an educator and a career counselor at the University of Kentucky, where I help students connect their career plans with their values. So for the past 10 years, I've worked with young people to get them connected to our community. And I've seen what a huge difference it makes to have public servants who are accessible and who are invested. I truly believe that we're in a time of challenge and opportunity, a time when we need strong and compassionate leaders who are dedicated to real results. And I want to be that leader for the third district. I want to translate my investment in Lexington. My desire to connect, listen to, and empower people into public service as your third district city council person. And I want to continue the work that I've done in social justice and civic engagement throughout my entire career with young people and at the Carnegie Center and furthermore as your representative. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much to you both. Next question, and we will have Hannah, you'll be answering this one first followed by Jess. Why are you the best candidate for this position?
Thanks, Brittany. I talked a little bit about my career background. I began my career as an AmeriCorps Vista member at the Carnegie Center for Literacy and Learning, where I helped to create programs within our communities to connect our youth with educational opportunities. As I look at my career path in the educational nonprofit and private sectors, what I've learned is is not just simply the importance of having your values, but in living them out and creating real solutions for the community. For the past decade, I've worked at the University of Kentucky in service learning and civic engagement, and I'm a career counselor. So I work with young people to get them started on their career and life paths. I'm endorsed by Seafair, by Anita Courtney, by Jim Gray, and Deborah Hensley, because I've built relationships in our community. And I want to continue doing that that work for our neighbors and for our neighborhoods. So I hope that my diverse career background and my ability to work within bureaucratic systems and in small organizations will serve our community and will be a service to all different members of Lexington. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Hannah. Now Jess, why are you the best candidate for this position?
Am I muting myself every time? Okay, just to make it clear. My commitment towards our community started way before I signed the papers to run for office. As a student at UK, I fought alongside my Green Thumb members to protect Robinson Forest from being mined yet again. As a fierce advocate for House Bill 70, I've been fighting for former felons to have the right to vote and greater access for all voting since 2004. I've been a KFTC power leader. I've served on two neighborhood associations. I've mentored the same dear student for six years. I advocated alongside the leaders of Take Back Cheapside to remove the Confederate statues from our town meeting place. And I have marched more times in Lexington and in Washington on behalf of Kentuckians than I can count. My service has way less to do with political office and everything about my passion to make Kentucky a more just and equitable place for everyone. Running for office is just one more way to bring power to all the people. That being said, I've navigated Lexington. I've been here for 20 years. And I've worked across nonprofits, education, leaders, businesses, trying to thwart Lexington and specifically the Carnegie Center forward in whatever seems like a consistently dying budget. So I understand what needs to happen in order to create economic revenue and to make nonprofits a success even on a very tight budget. And I'll bring that same skill set to city council.
See if I can master this alarm. Thank you, Jess. So now, thank you both for those introductions and really to help us get to know both of you a little bit better. And we will next move to a list of questions that were submitted by community members. If anyone does have questions about how we received those questions, please check out our website at lux.vote. So Jess, we will start this time with you answering first. And the first question submitted from the community, and just as a note as well, we are asking these questions exactly as we received them. What specific housing policies would you propose to address our housing shortage? Excuse me, you have.
So safe, adequate, and affordable housing is a cornerstone of a just and equitable community. And locally, it's in a state of crisis. It's been a part of my platform since day one. Lexington's low-wage workers and working families do not make enough money to afford the cost of living here. That includes housing. I believe fully funding the Affordable Housing Fund is a necessary component of an equitable framework. I support impactful use of our city's vacant land to secure our long-term housing solutions, which is stated in the comprehensive plan. And this plan lays down the framework for growth. And as a council member, I will prioritize implementing it with equitable policies and identifying methods that ensure our city's growth is self-sustaining, accessible to all, and considerate of neighborhood identity and culture. Even before COVID-19, we were dealing with an eviction epidemic. Many families spend more than half their income on mortgage rent and utilities and because of the devastating impacts of COVID-19, households with children are the most likely to lose income. This is going to cause evictions to skyrocket even more and leave many of our young families homeless. Securing protections for tenants and advancing city policies that provide direct aid and support to renters and homeowners who are facing displacement, eviction, and foreclosure in this time of recovery are among my top priorities.
Thanks so much. And now to Hannah, what specific housing policies would you propose to address our housing shortage? You have 90 seconds.
Thanks, Brittany. I'm so glad someone asked a question about this because I've been having conversations about our need to diversify our housing options during the course of this campaign with so many different members of our community. I've talked to housing justice advocates, developers, real estate agents, and our neighborhood associations and community members about the dire need for more housing options and the desire to make sure that our most vulnerable residents are protected. When I look at tools that I think that our city could use, I want us to consider the more robust use of community land trusts. I want us to work harder to use tools like inclusionary zoning. I also want us to work with people who need additional financial support by more robustly implementing financial planning tools like IDA accounts. I think that we have to be really proactive in working with developers and community members and creating public-private partnerships where all of the different residents in Lexington are supported. I know that we can make sure that we have inclusionary equitable practices throughout our city, and that's going to take an intentional effort. And I'm willing to work together with various partners to make that happen.
Thanks so much. And now Hannah, this next question, we'll start with your answer first. Are you in support of accessory dwelling units or ADUs, as they're commonly known? They received a unanimous vote by the Planning Commission last year, but have yet to be supported by council members. You have 90 seconds.
Brittany, I've talked to many community members about ADUs. I was just in a neighborhood conversation with Montclair about them. As we were talking about in the previous question, we certainly need more housing options. And densification is aligned with a comprehensive plan. And in that process, we have to make sure that we mindfully develop within our communities. I believe that ADUs can be a strong tool for creating more options for people, especially when we think about seniors and people who want to age in place and growing families. But the thing that keeps coming up over and over again is the need for regulation and oversight. I think that if we're going to move forward with ADUs, we want them to be an asset and not a burden for our community. So as we work together to create more options within Lexington, what we have to be careful about is regulation and thoughtful development. And with ADUs, that's something that I would work hard to make sure is part of the puzzle. Code enforcement and regulation, that's key.
Absolutely. Thank you. And back to you, Jess. Are you in support of accessory dwelling units or ADUs? They received a unanimous vote by the Planning Commission, but have yet to be supported by council members.
Yes, I often say that the third is a very diverse district. Every corner has a different personality and therefore a different priority. So looking at this blanketed approach is something that gives me pause. I look at our neighborhoods like Kenwick and Mintel, where the vast majority of our houses were built between the 1890s and 1930s. They include expensive mansions, middle-income bungalows, and a substantial amount of rental property, including low-income apartments. The diversity and an excellent public school have made it one of Lexington's most sought-after neighborhoods. And we have ADUs. They were here at the onset of our development. Most of our homes were built close to the road, which is why porch sitting is so revered. And I want to grow up and protect, grow up as in grow up, I feel like I have to accentuate that every time, and protect our urban service boundary, which overwhelmingly seems to be the case of third district residents. But we have to be willing to look at changing and adapting to a city plan that encourages increasing density and urban infill. Accessory dwelling units have been a strategy used in an array of cities to deal with issues of senior living and affordable housing. And I think of my own father right now, who is battling Parkinson's and cancer. And our discussion about his long-term care and housing needs comes up frequently. You know, we thought we found this place on Liberty Road, and then it ended up having a five-year waiting list. So just thinking about multi-generational homes becoming an increasingly popular idea in an increasingly impossible world to afford, having an ADU that could house my dad as he aged would be a huge asset to my family and I know to many others.
Thank you. And Jess, we will go to you first with answering the next question for another one from our community. Do you support defunding the Lexington Police Department?
So I think racial injustice has been the seminal issue of this country since our inception. And I've said it over and over, but I will always follow the lead of those directly impacted by inequality and racial inequality. So I think that's the first step is listening to what people are telling us that they need. The Lexington Police Force needs to, you know, in a lot of ways, think about the programs that they're utilizing and services that they're utilizing to help them make us more safe. I think the best way to take care of our folks who are dealing with root issues, so mental health and addiction, often are best, you know, developed and best committed to the experts on the ground who are doing the work every single day. I believe that the public housing, or I'm sorry, I believe that the public safety budget, which accounts for more than 50% of our budget, could be objectively changed if we looked at the right ways to do it. So restoring and improving public trust in our officers is really important. And one way to do that is by working and partnering with our nonprofits on the ground to share our resources and come together to serve the most vulnerable. And I believe from what I understand that our police officers actually have the ability to directly allocate a line item budget for services that they use, such as Greenhouse 17.
Thank you. So sorry, just out of time there.
Thank you.
No, that's okay. I appreciate you all. Just before we get there, you know, this would obviously be a lot easier in person. So I appreciate you all being flexible as we do this over Zoom and makes that a little bit difficult. To you, Hannah, do you support defunding the Lexington Police Department? You have 90 seconds.
I know that there's a lot to be said on this topic, and I'm going to work hard to say what I need to say during our limited time. I do believe that reassessment and review is necessary for public safety, and not just in our community, but communities across the country. We've seen protests calling for more accountability for a reason. And I've met with public safety officials and community members during my campaign to talk to them about what public safety means to them. I believe that no matter what we do, as we're determining our priorities within our community, that we've got to work with community members and our police as equal parts of the conversation. There's a lot of trust that needs to be built and accountability and transparency and the provision of key services to our residents. That's all really important. And we have to make sure that our social services are fully funded. As we're supporting our community members, you know, we have our Commission on Social Justice and Equality. That's a good step. Now we have to make sure that we can sustainably devote funds and people to carry out the objectives of that work that's been laid out by that commission. I promise that as your city council member, I will work to bring all different community members to the table to make that happen.
Thank you. And Hannah, we will go back to you to answer this next community question. Lexington has a growing problem with gun violence, especially involving young people. What, in your opinion, are some of the causes of gun violence? And as a council member, how might you try to do something about it?
This is a question that's come up in other forums during our campaigns. And I think that, you know, my work with incarcerated women and teaching writing to them has shown me the importance of early interventions and of building community-based relationships. Guns are a big part of the problem, but unfortunately, we don't have very many ways to control that at this point in our country. So what we can do is we can create community-led efforts to make sure that kids within our city have opportunities, especially children who have been marginalized or left out. Partners for Youth is an example of an organization that provides relationships and mentorships and job corps training and workforce development opportunities for young people of all different ages. Common Good does similar work. It's my priority as a city council member to make sure that we create public-private partnerships and we work with our nonprofits so that kids have leadership, educational, and athletic opportunities and feel connected with one another and with the community so that they can so they can move forward in a way that is hopeful. And I would support any efforts from my role in leadership to do that.
Thank you. And to you, Jess, what in your opinion are some of the causes of gun violence? And as a council member, how might you try to do something about that?
We don't show up for our youth in this city, and we need to show up for our youth. We need to be identifying and supporting the organizations that are working to address the root causes of violence and invest in education and long-term mentoring programs that focus on compassion and empowerment. Investment in the future of our youth shows that we believe in them and makes them feel worthy. And it helps reverse the sense of hopelessness that especially permeates in the conversations of our young Black and Brown youth. Targeted intervention that involves mentoring and family support, addressing trauma, repairing harm, and providing resources is essential to combating teen violence. Working with the Carnegie Center's tutoring program has really driven home for me the direct correlation between juvenile delinquency and illiteracy. We have one of the most highly educated cities. Rather than criminalizing health issues, segregating our Black and Brown youth, and focusing too heavily on punitive measures, we should focus our educational resources on those who need it the most.
Thank you. We've got two more community questions. And Jess, on this next one, we will start with you first. Charitable nonprofit businesses employ 9% of the Lexington and Fayette County workforce, about 14,000 residents, and account for 9.6% of the annual wages, about $674 million as of 2017. In addition to being major employers, the nonprofit sector also brings significant revenues through tourism, local dining, and retail support. How would you support the nonprofit sector as an employer of choice and as an economic engine in Lexington?
The nonprofit sector continues to be an important economic engine. And I'm part of that sector. It's growing. And it's growing because in many cases, we've had to fill the gaps left by governments, massive funding cuts to social services in our most vulnerable communities, especially in these last two decades. But the structure of this sector has also helped fuel inequality. Many of us in the nonprofit sector are committed to lifting people out of poverty. I am too through education. But many of us are barely making a living wage. If we want to attract the best and brightest to serve, we must understand that nonprofit work is not just a tick off the resume for do-gooders. Our most empathetic and brilliant minds need to be validated. They deserve to make enough money to live. This also contributes, in my opinion, to the lack of an inclusive staff that we often see in nonprofits. We know that our Black Americans and other peoples of color do not have the same level of generational wealth as our white counterparts. It is not always an option to come into the nonprofit sector if you come out of college with no financial support. So while nonprofits are dependent upon the public sector for funding, the government is dependent on the nonprofit sector to provide services to its constituents. So we must educate our grant funders and foundations who support our programs, but not people, that it is an outdated model and unsustainable. So I believe partnerships with nonprofits, foundations, and local governments have the potential to drive innovation. And I believe a big part of that is making sure we pay people a living wage.
Thank you, Jess. And Hannah, in addition to being major employers, the nonprofit sector also brings significant revenues through tourism, dining, and retail. How would you support the sector as an employer of choice and as an economic engine in Lexington?
Brittany, I'm so glad you asked this question because it's something I work with young people about as a career counselor every day. You know, I truly believe from my own experience working in the nonprofit sector that that model can be a really effective way to organize and improve community well-being. But I also see some challenge and opportunity here. My goal as a leader in this community would be to partner with nonprofits so that the people who are working in the nonprofit sector have more opportunities for professional development, for leadership training, and for fundraising to increase compensation for their employees and to help our nonprofit sector maintain top talent so they can strengthen their position as an economic engine in our city and so that we can ensure their stability. I think that there's a lot that we could do in partnering with nonprofits and for-profit businesses to promote creativity and innovation. And that's the type of work I do with young people now and the type of work I would love to do in City Hall so that we have more opportunities for all members of our community, especially those who are doing the hard work in the nonprofit sector.
Thank you both. So our last community-driven question that we did receive from the community. And Hannah, this time we will start with you. I'll try not to get distracted again with my dog walking in the background. It's the Downfalls, so I apologize if that one's distracting. At a time of crisis with the COVID-19 pandemic and urgent calls to address racial and social injustice, nonprofits have stepped up in remarkable ways to provide crucial services for the Lexington community, as we know and as both of you all just touched on. At the same time, nonprofit partnerships with the city were cut from the proposed budget, though were later restored by the Urban County Council. What is your position on the city's future agreements and partnerships with nonprofits to deliver needed services, enrichment opportunities, and more that ensure a safe, thriving community for all of Lexington's residents?
We did just touch upon the essential nature of the nonprofit sector. You know, as a community, our budget, our city budget reflects our values. Moving forward, we have to make sure that we support our most vulnerable residents. Unfortunately, city government can't do it all alone, and they shouldn't have to because our nonprofit sector does a lot of work to provide social service benefits and wraparound supports to our community members. It would be my priority to make sure that our nonprofit sector continues to be able to not only function, but to move forward in the initiatives that they need in order to promote high quality of life for as many community members as possible. And that's my priority, plain and simple. I know that we could do more with the ways that we support people in our community. And our ESR program and our nonprofit sector are essential to that work. And we only have more people who are vulnerable now. So that's what I would do moving forward.
Thank you. And back to you, Jess. And if I'm going to stop repeating the question, if you would like me to repeat the question, please let me know, and I'm happy to do that. But we'll try it both ways. So please feel free to speak up if you'd like me to repeat it.
So this is the first time I think I actually didn't need you to repeat the question.
I apologize.
Oh, sorry. You throw it out into the universe, right? That's what happens.
That's what happens. No, no worries at all. So during a time of crisis, nonprofits have really stepped up in so many ways to provide services to Lexington. However, they were originally cut from the mayor's proposed budget this year, but they were restored, of course, by the Urban County Council. What is your position on the city's future agreements and partnerships with nonprofits to deliver needed services, enrichment opportunities, and more that ensure a safe, thriving community for all of Lexington's residents?
Well, I will just say that the ESR grants, in my opinion, were on the chopping block to begin with, even before COVID. We were going into a budget deficit, and I really feel like we were absolutely could have been cut from that. And as a nonprofit employee, I'm concerned that the city might not fund our nonprofit sector through the grant system if we don't get more relief funding from the federal government, especially during a recovery budget period. The Carnegie Center where I work, we were cut out of it. We reduced our reach to kids at a time when the disparity of the achievement gap is clearer than ever. So as a council member, I will champion nonprofits. The amount of services programming nonprofits are able to provide on skeleton crews with an ever-tightening budget is unmatched in government. Compassionate leadership and commitment in our ever-presented nonprofits are part of how I lead at the Carnegie Center, and we will continue to create meaningful change in our community. I will show city council and our residents why working with local groups, social services, educations, and the arts is generally more effective and less expensive than doing it from City Hall. It's our everyday people who make this community that inspire me to fight for a unified Lexington. And the nonprofit community is certainly at my heart.
Thank you. So that was our last community question. We will now move on to the LexVote Coalition questions. And I would also tell the audience, while we'll be talking about some of these questions, these are also going to be questions that can be found on the questionnaires that you all completed, and those can be found on our website. So if you would like additional information or to go back to any of those, they are on the lex.vote website as well. So on this one, Jess, we will start with you. And this first question is going to be about the budget, as we were just talking about. In recent years, Lexington's budget obligations have outpaced its ability to generate revenue. In the 2021 budget, this dramatically impacted everything from economic development to social services. What strategies do you recommend to address revenue shortages while balancing spending priorities?
So this is a really important question. And, you know, as Kentucky and Lexington respond to the repercussions of COVID-19, we obviously need guidance and support from Washington. And direct financial support and expanded employment protections for workers to reduce that long-term impact would certainly help. But the interplay between our citizens, our business owners, and nonprofits, government, has never been more important. Lexington's greatest asset is our people. And I think that everything in the time of COVID should be on the table. We have learned that having one revenue stream come from payroll taxes isn't reliable. We need to diversify it. And I would like to work with our state legislators in taking back our tax system from Frankfurt so we can decide, you know, how we create revenue, how we tax, who we tax, why we tax. And I think that's a really important first step. I also think that there's, you know, so many ways to develop revenue through our growth. We've talked a lot about ADUs, and we haven't mentioned Airbnb. But, you know, providing an option when we're collecting licensing fees and taxes from those homes could go straight into an Affordable Housing Fund. So again, I think everything should be on the table. I think if COVID has shown us anything, it's the importance of diversifying our revenue stream and looking at how we fee and license and create revenue is so important moving forward.
Thank you. And back to you, Hannah. Here I am repeating the question again. What strategies do you recommend to address revenue shortages while balancing spending priorities? You have 90 seconds.
Thank you, Brittany. In the coming years and months, we're going to have to overcome some real challenges in our economy. You know, there was already a budgetary shortfall before COVID-19, and that has illustrated to us the importance of careful tax forecasts. When I consider some solutions, we have the opportunity to create some additional tax districts. Maybe we have some small, single-time user fees we can incorporate into our city. Maybe we have some small, single-time user fees we can incorporate into our city systems. I also know that we have got to create more economic opportunity. It's important for me to, as a city leader, work with educational and workforce development systems like the University of Kentucky, like Transylvania, Transylvania University, like major employers that we could bring into our community so that we can have more revenue and so we can keep people employed. I support participatory budgeting as well so that residents can have a say in how LFUCG allocates their funds. You know, we will have to work with the legislative delegation for changes in Frankfurt, and city leaders play a really important role in that process. And I would work hard to take the lead on making those changes so that Lexington has more options to diversify the way they get money at our city and how it circulates as a result.
Thank you. Trying to get this timer down. Okay. All right. So Hannah, we will start with your answer on this next question. And it is about urban growth, which we touched on a little bit earlier, but this will, will give you both a chance to dig in a little bit more. As you both, I imagine, know from lots of conversations, Lexington's 2018 comprehensive plan encourages infill and redevelopment as our main growth strategy. What specific implementation aspects of the comprehensive plan are working? And what are some challenges that you think might need to be addressed?
Brittany, this is a conversation that again has come up in my dialogue with neighborhoods and neighborhood associations. I think that we can all agree that the comprehensive plan is a really well-researched document. And in its implementation, we have got to make sure that we protect the character and diversity of our neighborhoods. And effective planning and infill and redevelopment, you know, these are goals of the comprehensive plan. Those don't work unless we have effective enforcement and implementation all around. So we are going to make sure, I think, moving forward, not only that we work on equitable infill and sustainable growth and livability throughout our city, but that we make sure that code enforcement is consistent and dependable. So that will be my priority moving forward as I'm working with residents and developers and city planners to make sure that our comprehensive plan can not only be implemented, but that the codes within our city can be enforced in a way that serves all of our residents.
Thank you. And to you, Jess, what implementation aspects are working at the comprehensive plan and what challenges need to be addressed?
Well, first, I want to thank our city leaders for understanding the importance of a comprehensive plan, especially as we experience exponential growth. And as many in the third district know, we bear the brunt of that growth. This was a crucial, crucial first step in addressing the many issues our city faces. I support the plans and I support the goals in the plan that again focus up instead of building out. And one of my top issues and priorities is just ensuring that that conversation is geared towards smart and equitable growth. The challenge is incorporating the neighbors into the early stages of development to avoid the long, expensive process of defending their neighborhoods. The last two years alone, we've seen it play out multiple times in city council. So I think some of the best redevelopment opportunities in Lexington corridors are in our high vacancy or empty retail centers. I think about the old Walmart side on Richmond Road. This would be an ideal place for a mixed-use development that combines retail and affordable apartments. It's also a moment where we can talk about transit-oriented development. So looking at our corridors, I think reimagine Lexington did a great job in Nicholasville and focusing on how we can build the corridors out and in general, looking for opportunities to create more density near in-town neighborhoods. But any redevelopment must be done in partnership with existing neighborhoods, and the best way to get that cooperation and buy-in is to make sure our developers engage with neighbors in specific plans and are willing to listen and to adapt to their concerns, especially important in university neighborhoods.
Thank you, Jess. And we will start with your answer on this next question. It is about COVID recovery. The impact of COVID on local businesses and nonprofits will be significant and long-lasting. What will you do as a council member to support their recovery and foster their resilience moving forward?
So again, I go back to this idea of how our government, our nonprofit, and our small businesses can all work together to create lasting solutions that can help get us through this crisis. We see every day how hard our small businesses are struggling, and they need our support. They need our support to make sure that they're able to keep their doors open, to make sure that they're able to continue to hire people and keep them on payroll. Because as we've stated, the more people who are paid and the, the more money people make is directly linked to the revenue that the city produces. So making sure our small businesses stay intact is really important, and I would do everything I could to work with Commerce Lexington and the mayor's office to make sure that we're supporting our small businesses while we navigate through this time of COVID, and also making sure that we have measures and metrics in place to make sure that how we're funding and how we're supporting these small businesses is being distributed proportionately. We want to make sure that our small businesses, who are directly impacted by racial and economic inequality, aren't the ones who are going to close. But Lexington has come so far these last 10 years, and it's changed a lot since I was in college. So anything we can do to keep our businesses open and create those meaningful conversations is worth our time and it's worth our energy.
Thank you. And Hannah, over to you. What will you do as a council member to support the recovery of local businesses and foster their resilience moving forward?
I was just in a conversation a couple of weeks ago with local business owners over here on National Avenue. And, you know, something that came up was making sure that we have something like a local business fund. That's something that I suggest in order to help support our existing businesses. You know, I've talked about the importance of local businesses and our economy throughout this conversation this evening. You know, I believe that keeping people within their jobs, keeping small businesses afloat, and then making sure that people have health insurance, that they have economic stability. You know, our city has an important role to play in that process, especially in a time of challenge like the one we find ourselves in now. I also believe that, as I mentioned earlier, fully funding nonprofits with LFUCG is incredibly important. And if elected, I want to make sure that I create policies that support and promote nonprofits. And we can do that with national service volunteer programs to help build capacity. And we can also help, again, with public-private partnerships that support our nonprofits and our businesses at the same time. And workforce development and our Chamber of Commerce can be important partners in that process.
Thank you, Hannah. So we will go to you to answer first, and this will be our last question. Given your understanding of Lexington's long and complicated history around racial injustices, what do you plan to do to directly address inequality in its root causes in our city?
This is, again, touching upon a conversation we started earlier about defunding the police and accountability. Number one, I think the important thing is something that we've started to do, and that's to acknowledge that there's a problem and commit to solving it. That's going to take a lot of time and resources and intention, and that's a long and continued effort. When I think about systemic racism within our community and within our systems, it's not just in one branch, but it's everywhere. The mayor's commission is an important first step, but now we have to make sure that we commit to the recommendations therein and move forward. And that means having community-led efforts at the fore. We have to make sure that if people have been left out of the conversation, that as leaders within our community, we step in and proactively include a wider range of participants and that we're transparent and accountable in all of our governmental systems in the process of doing so. I am committed to addressing problems within our system so that we can increase the quality of life for all residents in Lexington and to do that in a sustainable, meaningful way.
Absolutely. Thank you. And Jess, going over to you for the last question. Given your understanding of the complicated history in Lexington around racial injustice, what do you plan to do to directly address inequality in its root causes?
So I've said it before, and I'll probably say it a million more times, but racial injustice has been the seminal, has been the seminal issue of this country since our inception. And I am committed to always following the lead of those most directly impacted by racial injustice. So accountability and transparency among all government entities are essential to building a safe, healthy, and trusting community. And we must do better in providing civilian oversight for those tasked with serving and protecting our city. To restore and improve public trust in our officers, which we talked a little bit about earlier, but that I didn't say, is that I support making changes to the collective bargaining agreement, such as creating a disciplinary citizen review board for police and for prohibiting officers from removing past disciplinary actions from their personal files. Faith and trust in our officers and those who protect and serve will make us all safer. I also think that in the same idea of listening to, to the leaders is that I would follow the guidance of the NAACP and our local Black faith leaders that Lexington achieved 15% minority representation in its city's contract. And I'd like the current task force on racial justice and equality, and equality to become a permanent government department with the direct revenue stream. We've seen over and over again when we devote enough of our government to one issue, like the Office of Homelessness and Prevention, that we, we provide better solutions for our people. And this department would also develop and track equity-related metrics so we can understand which departments are consistently failing our Black Indigenous and non-Black people of color.
Well, we will have to stop here as we are out of time for this evening's forum, but I just want to thank both of you so much for taking time to be here with us this evening. We know that there are lots of forums and lots of questionnaires as we lead up to this election, but hearing directly from you all is just so, so important to our community. So we thank the audience for submitting questions and tuning in. Thank both Hannah and Jess for their involvement and discussion this evening. So thank you both again. We'll be speaking with fifth district candidates Bill Farmer Jr. and Lee Sheehan up next. So thank you both again, and have a wonderful rest of your evening. We hope the rest of you will stay tuned as we hear from our fifth district candidates.
All right. Should we step off, I guess?
Yes. More than welcome to tune into. If you go to the Zoom registration link, you can turn into the fifth district if you're, if you're curious.
Thank you so much. This is fun.
We really appreciate it. Have a great one. Thank you. We really appreciate it. Have a great one.
Yeah.